Mayor Morandi?
Yes.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Vlado?
Here.
Okay, call a meeting at water, welcome everyone. Shooting down this agenda. First is a financial report which we have and Michelle has given everyone. Take a look at, does anyone have any questions or anything? If we do, we'd have to actually send them there. I wouldn't have the answers.
No, no questions. However, I think it's important to note that the garbage cost is eighty-four dollars and fifty cents a ton and recycling is now eighty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents a ton. So recycling is almost three dollars more per ton than garbage.
This is over how many years now? When we were paying nothing for three years.
A year and a half ago. Yeah, so it's gone up by eighty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents in a year and a half per ton.
Something we are going to have to deal with. Okay, if anyone has any, anything on that, if you need, send it to Michelle. Sure she'll have the answer.
Yeah, Brooksie and I are only working on a project that will sort of work this through step by step, try to get people involved in it. And knowledgeable on what it is that we do have to come up with a whole series of steps to get people to where we can possibly separate recycle, do the paper as long as we can keep it dry in one week and do the cans and clean cans of bottles another week, but that's, we have to work up the whole system. And there is grant money for education on that, so to include newspapers and flyers and so on.
And the reason you're doing that is because dual stream is less expensive than single stream.
Right.
And you're also looking at when it rains and the cardboard or paper recyclables get wet, we pay more. So if they can be kept dry.
Which can easily be done if you, if you, you know, we'll, we'll talk it through, but like as I said to my husband the other day, we have empty garbage, empty barrels downstairs of plastic containers, which the newspaper when they're uncovered, it'll still dry.
So, so.
It makes sense, so that.
So the objective is to lower our costs.
Is to lower the cost, separate the newspapers and cardboard one week from the, because I believe we could do newspapers and cardboards for close to zero.
That'd be great.
From what we got from Michelle, so we will, by the time we get to it, of course, the show, the cost will offer probably not to the system.
Nice work, Fran.
Police department.
Evening, everybody. Summer has come and gone already, unbelievable. For the month of September, we had a total call number for service was ninety-three, was up a little bit. We had, it looks like we had a bunch more than eighty cases that we had to respond to along with the ambulance around the village. Other than that, the actual vehicle accidents have come, come way down because again, a lot of tourists are not flocking here and causing accidents in the village. Although our pedestrians have now jumped up due to the boats. So we have, we put on a walking tour again for the upcoming weekends on a voluntary basis. And so far, we've been able to cover, the first weekend we covered Saturday, we couldn't, we couldn't cover Sunday. But Nico has been out there also, so he's also, is there to answer questions for the tourists and people on the boat when they get to go and stuff like that. Total, total number of calls per date are six hundred and twenty-three. We had one arrest last month, which was a five-eleven, which is a suspended driver's license. We had sixty-two moving violations. We had sixty-seven parking summonses for a total hundred and twenty-nine for the month. And for the year, we had one thousand one hundred and one summonses. The boot that we had purchased a couple of months ago has been working forever as people have been coming to pain. And we also have, we've got in probably close to fifteen hundred dollars that was outstanding owed us for years. So I think the word is out, it's been all over Facebook, actually there's been a lot of misinformation. Are they booting people now for four, over four hours parking? No, we are not. We are booting for anybody that owes summonses over a certain amount. And there will be lay fees on top of that. And what I'm requesting from the board would also, I would like to attach a boot removal fee, and that can be done in the village ordinance if we can get together and pass that. To remove the boot would be an additional fee on top of the summonage you already owe. Because normally, if we would have a private tow truck company come in, they would charge close to a hundred and seventy-five dollars for the tow from the village to their shop. And then it's, I think, twenty dollars a day until a person pays the fines and comes against the vehicle. Right now with the boot, they're just paying what they owe the village, the officer's going and removing the boot. So my suggestion would be a reboot, it's an administrative fee for removal of the boot. Almost every municipality has it. So basically, we're not trying to get every dollar off everybody, but we want you to pay your fines on time. So we wouldn't have to have the boot. Other than that, everything is going well. We're gearing up for the Halloween parade for the kids. The votes again, the hops on the Hudson is going to be again at the end of this month. I have enough officers to cover almost all of those. The only issue going forward with that would be the church had made a inquiry about the five o'clock mass on Saturday night. I, I suggested to them to make an advance to the people that are going to that mass to come down northern and they can, we'll get them down around into the parking lot for the five o'clock mass because Main Street will be closed. So we'll work on that. Other than that, that's it.
Great, thank you, Lex. Ports Recreation, we don't have anything. Planning Board. Planning Board received a referral to construct one dwelling unit with two parking spots on existing plot that already has two residential building. Property is located in a I-1 district for Chapter 134 of the Village Code. Site plan approval is required from the Planning Board and special use permit from the Zoning Board of Appeal. As the property already has two R-1 residences, the Planning Board asked the applicant to start with the zoning board of appeal. It is the board's opinion that the code only permits one residence per I-1 lot, so significant variances would be needed before any consideration of site plan would be even, could even be undertaken. Thank you, Matt. Zoning Board, no new business, old business. Would you like to, I'll be erring for a moment here. On October third, a variance was granted for 207 Main Street to allow construction of a porch in the front set back wider than allowed by code. The porch reestablishes the width of the historic porch in the same location. Current Business Board is working on new application instructions. An application for a third dwelling at 29 Rock Street, which we just kind of discussed briefly, is likely on hold. A use variance would be needed. Like to elaborate on anything?
We did consult with John First about 29 Rock Street, and his opinion is that it would need a use variance and would also have to look at the existing buildings there. That's proposed to become an R-1, and at that point, it might be easier to look at splitting it than to try to get a use variance, to subdivide it, if they really want to have three, three houses there.
James came in and I was talking to him, isn't there a need to purchase the, the space from the village in order to have the driveway put in? Or no? I didn't, we didn't get really into it.
We didn't, we didn't talk about that. I know he was talking about a 207 doing something with the village to rebuild the retaining wall right in front of it.
Yeah, that was the difference, yeah.
Yeah, he didn't mention anything about buying anything from the.
Okay. Let's put on the plan, I think, for that, the Rock Street property, there's where he has the driveway planned, that's, I think there's parking or well, it's village property from what I understand.
But there's a pretty big hurdle for that to happen in case, that project.
I'm sure you're glad you have another fun application.
We'll see what happens with it.
Okay, let's see. Town of Phillips Town, not here. Historic District Review. Current applications, in September, we received applications for Sixth Polding Avenue, 134-140 Main Street, Butterfield Buildings 4, 5, and 6, 124 Main Street, 207 Main Street, 5 Railroad Avenue, and 45 Main Street. We further reviewed and provided feedback to the town supervisor based on the drawings provided for the renovation of the town hall. Due to lack of quorum, we did not hold an additional workshop session in September. For October monthly meeting, on October ninth, we have received new requests for review of 41 Garden Street, 92 Main Street, 40 Polding Avenue, and 9 Orchard Street. We expect to continue our conversation with 124 Main Street regarding their replacement siding and roof reconstruction. Boardwork projects notes, Karen Parks, on behalf of the owners of 126 Main, submitted to the board quite extensive documentation of the existing conditions and demolition process of the building at that site. Hard copies have been submitted to the Butterfield Library and the Putnam County Historic Society, and a digital copy was submitted to the HDRB. This concludes the requirements of the SECRA Declaration and their certification, certificate of appropriateness. While we lament the loss of any of our community's historic resources, the reuse and repurpose of numerous artifacts and materials onsite by the building owners and designer is commendable, particularly those exterior items which remain visible to the public. Thank you. Anything from the fire company?
No, no report, Kevin.
Okay, Tree Advisory Board, nothing there. Marie, Code Update.
The Code Update Committee met once in September with a full quorum and twice with only some members able to attend. Months of September was spent in continued review of Chapter 134 zoning for consistency and clarity of the dimensional table and the proposed zoning map. On October second, the CUC will conduct the fifth and last public meeting to review, review the full set of recommended changes to the Village Code. The fifth public meeting will be held open until October thirtieth to allow additional time to receive comments and suggestions. After the meeting is officially closed, the CUC will meet to consider the comments and suggestions received and evaluate what additional changes are appropriate for the Village Code. It is expected that the CUC will present their recommendations to the Village Board of Trustees in early December at the latest. The September conference call with NYSRDA was conducted, no issues were raised by NYSRDA. NYSRDA will permit an updated contract with new dates and an opportunity to move funding among the various phases, all of which will be beneficial to the village.
Marie, on the second exit, the CUC will conduct, should that be conducted?
On October sixth, this was the September report?
Oh.
So it's talking about the future. So, future time.
Future, back to the.
The future is called.
Okay, the future, the future. Very good, yeah. Water wastewater, how's it going, Matt?
Not bad.
Yourself? Good.
So the reservoirs are still continuing dropping with a lack of rainfall. We were at ninety-six percent capacity last year, this time sixty-eight point five. We had a usage of eight million, two-hundred-and-seventy thousand in two thousand and eighteen as opposed to the nine point one eight million that we saw last month, which is a nine percent increase. But the bacteriological tests and all, everything else that was sampled this month is good, went over that. At the reservoirs, the blue-green algae sampling, we did actually get selected, we've conducted two rounds before as of ten-two. Everything was found in good standing, it's not having an effect on anything that we're producing. Secondary operations and licensing, finalizing the paperwork with Ryan to get him on board. And the DEP, we have a potential meeting next week on Tuesday if everything pans out. On the wastewater side of things, we took in five point two eight million gallons with an average of a hundred and seventy-six thousand a day. RPOD and TSS removals were good and compliance. Did meet up with Darren of D and D Engineering on Thursday, gave him the updates of what we were doing to the process changes to further look into the sewage de-watering pilot study. He says he's going to get some data and present a quote shortly. And then we have the airation blower number two that failed on September the twenty-fifth. And I did just get the PO to go ahead and get that repaired. That's about all I got.
Is the, is the usage, actual usage, or could it be a leak somewhere or something?
Well, it could be a little bit of a leak, but I'm still getting affiliated with the Beacon Site to monitor all that, so.
Okay. Will we be able to figure that out?
Yeah, once I get into the swing of everything and be able to look at all the previous data, we can definitely figure that out.
Right now, we have voluntary conservation, should we change it?
I think right now, we're kind of maintaining. Hopefully, we're going to see a lot of rain the rest of the week, so we'll see how that goes, but definitely not.
I mean, even if it's halfway through the, through the month, do you think we need to change up hollow?
Oh, yeah, definitely. You guys don't have any other further questions? Mind if I stop into the sewer plant? I want to stop into the sewer plant, we made an adjustment there today, so if you don't have any other further questions.
I do, Matt.
Sure.
The airation blower number two.
Correct.
Is that covered under warranty?
I don't believe so. The original upgrade, I think, was done in two thousand and fifteen, so I believe that's out of warranty by now, but I can double check that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Port Building Department, new building permit, applications received twelve, building permits issued seven, dumpster permits one, COs issued eight, record search is completed six, complaints received four, referrals generated, HDRB four, ZBA two. Fees, applications and permit fees collected, one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Record search fees collected, four hundred and fifty dollars, for a total of sixteen hundred and ten dollars for the month of September. Highway Department, Fran, you want to?
Sure, I can do it. For the month of September, we collected fifty-seven point seventy-five tons of garbage and eighteen tons of recycling. For the month of September, we built a storage shed for signposts and for form lumber, installed three new parking bumpers at Mayor's Park, continued cutting back limbs, grinding sidewalks, and filling potholes, and started filling in low spots around sidewalks with soil. We painted the inside of the doors and the exterior light at the visitor's center while also installing new soap dispensers. We did full repairs on catch basins at the southeast corner of Parsonage Street, Crayser Drive, and the southwest corner of Parrot Street. We cut down two dead trees in front of Springbrook Condos on Fair Street, we repaired broken curbs in front of the Pizza Place and in front of the Garden Cafe, inspected the back filling of the new service line at forty-five Main Street. We sharpened blades and greased the zero turn, rebuilt and repaired the leaking hydraulic system on the nineteen eighty-seven International Dump Truck, completely rewired the headlights, directional wiring harness for the salter on the nineteen eighty-seven International Dump Truck, submitted by Robert Demme, the Highway Department crew chief.
Justice Court, fines forfeited, bail civil penalties, fifty-eight hundred and ninety-two dollars, parking tickets, five thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-five cents, civil fees, seven hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents, mandatory state surcharges, three thousand four hundred and two dollars, a total of fifteen thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and five cents, which is a lot of, a lot of fees and fines. I think that's like double what we usually take in, so somebody's doing a good job, or else a lot of people are all of a sudden become careless. Report Mayor and Board of Trustees, anything from, anyone?
The Code Update Committee has provided a proposed letter for, to request an extension of the Greenway Grant. I'd like to get that, as well as creating a revised budget. I'd like to get that submitted to Greenway at the end of this week so that we don't have any problems bumping up against the end of the year. The request for extension is a one-year extension.
I'm fine with that.
Great, great, great. I'll get it out tomorrow then. Thank you both.
There is, this was from last week, it's not on the agenda, but we have the, the parking crossout over on Rock Street that the gentleman was asking to be widened. I went over there and measured everything, I have a little, little map from his, from his survey. Right now, where it is, the driveway is only nine feet that was there. The person purchased three properties, two of the properties, one that he's now accessing don't have a driveway, but he's now using the other property that he purchased as the driveway. The driveway is only nine feet, it's nine feet wide, the crossout's twenty feet wide, plus or minus, and the remaining parking in front of the buildings that don't have any parking is thirty feet, so that's just enough for two cars squeezing it. So the Highway Department painted the yellow lines last week, I heard the owner wasn't that happy about that, did Larry have to actually make an appearance?
Yes.
Anyway, I, I don't see, I think half, most of the problem is that he has a huge vehicle, the street's very narrow, it's only like nineteen and a half feet, that's including parking on the side, so it's really a limited radius getting into this tiny driveway to a building that really doesn't have any, doesn't have access to it, so I think we should leave it the way it is.
His driveway is nine feet and he's already got eleven feet more locked up.
Yeah, there's five and a half on each side, but it's so narrow and he has a, an SUV, like an Escalade or something.
There's a telephone pole right there.
You can't make a turn really, yeah, there's that one.
Across the street from.
It's, it's difficult.
Is, is the, the yellow just goes to his property line on?
It's beyond the driveway.
No, it's beyond the driveway, but it goes, does it go to, is this his property line here?
This is the property for the, this is the, this is his property.
Okay, so he, so he's backed out to his property line?
Yeah, 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 it's for the property for that driveway.
It's probably, it's probably marked out eleven feet more than the width of his driveway.
Right, that's what was existing.
Okay.
And I've never heard a problem. Steve actually said he knew the person before that had a suburb in it.
Yeah, it was tough for him getting it out of there, no doubt.
But he did. Is everyone fine with, this is, this is the low-down properties are here that have no, no access to, and that is, this is the mark out right now.
Looks good.
So there's thirty feet left right now, if we take another foot, well, that's another, that's a little less for even parking there.
And Rock Street already has a problem?
Yeah. So if it's all right with everyone, I'll send a letter or a note saying, or leaving it as is?
I don't think a foot hurts anything, but.
Well, it takes a foot away from a short, short area that's already, there's no parking for his building, it's three store, three, his three apartments.
I understand.
Lit?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Let's see, anything else from the board? Next, approval of, to add cyber liability insurance? I got to seeing numbers here, do you know anything?
Yes, this is me. For the past couple of years, when, when they've come to go over our liability insurance in the villages, they've talked to us about cyber liability and basically the rise of municipal ransomware problems and typically in small cities and towns. So this year, we asked Kieran Boyle, who is our agent, to give us some more information. They sent us some, some information, we had to have a, a survey filled out, which we did some of it, Anthony Adombo did some of it, talking about the, the computer systems here and how we, how we backed them up and so on and so forth. And so then they sent us this quote, this is a NIMR quote, basically, if we want to be covered for up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, it's four-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars a, a year. For five-hundred thousand per occurrence, it's five-eighty, five-eighty-one a year. For a million dollars per occurrence, it's eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars a year. I spoke, I, I asked Kieran to give me some backup, and I think I sent everyone an email, I don't know if you got it, talking, showing an article about the rise of municipal ransomware and how quickly it, it's becoming a big problem, either with hospitals or municipalities or police stations or whatever. You know, once somebody gets you and locks up your system and they demand, you know, four-hundred thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars, whatever it may be, to unlock you, then you're up a creek, so, so I think, Michelle said that we have seven hundred dollars available in our, in our liability insurance budget line if we wanted to do this. I spoke to Kieran again today, he basically says, if we do get hit, NIMR will send a negotiator, the negotiator will work with whoever, but I mean, their biggest thing will be to get us back online as soon as possible. So they will have the background from like Anthony or whoever about where our backup is and how we can get our systems up and running again without paying if at all possible. Their, their last resort is to pay, but they also don't want to keep us without our systems for very long, so, so they will work through this whole thing with us.
Well, when we met with him, he said that they, they often pay because there really is no recourse, because the, the people that are holding hostages are nowhere in our country, or if they are, we can't find them there, often they're overseas or whatever, and you really have no choice because they have the, your whole system locked up. And some of the ransoms are in the high eight-hundred thousands and stuff like that that he mentioned, so.
So it's his recommendation to buy one of these boats?
Yeah, his recommendation is to buy it.
And did he have a recommendation on?
Is which one?
Yeah.
I think that's, that's our call, this basically.
Who was it at the time we were talking to him that was undergoing this situation?
I forget.
Somewhere nearby.
So, so what is, what is covered? They pay the ransom, do they also pay for the work to get the system back operational?
If they don't pay the ransom, they will, they will negotiate, or they will pay for us to get back on, let me see, they'll try to get us back up without paying as quickly as possible, so they will pay for getting us back to, you know, wherever our, wherever our data is, and I didn't speak to Anthony, so it's either in the cloud or Anthony has it backed up someplace, getting our systems back up and running without having to go through, which means rebootting our systems and getting the old data out and the new data back in, but they will pay, that's all part of the insurance coverage.
And, and this is dependent upon timely backups?
Yeah, which Anthony, I believe, does, and I can go back.
Yeah, what's, yeah, what's.
I don't know how often Anthony backs up, that would be a Jeff question.
Yeah, that would be.
I mean, whatever it is, it would be bring us back to.
That point.
Whatever point that he has a backup for.
And the ransom itself is covered also?
The ransom is covered if we have to pay it, if they can avoid paying it, they will try to, but.
When, when, when it says as quickly as possible, what kind of timeframe?
Well, I said to him, you're going to keep us up for like a month, he said, well, you know, hopefully within a couple of days to a week. But that's up to whoever the negotiators are that committed from NIMR to do that, and that's, you know, I wasn't getting a straight, I'm not straight, but I wasn't getting a clear, and I'm not sure he was that sure. But I told Kieran if we needed more information, we could get back to him, so if you want to, to get, you know, give me some questions, I can go back with more questions, and then we can hold this till next week.
I guess the key question is how frequently is the backup? Where is the backup mainly kept? And what kind of, what is the expected timeframe for being back operational? And what do we, what do we do if the backup, let's say the backup is taken on a Monday and the attack happens on a, on a Friday? What, what do we do to recreate the work that has occurred between Monday and Friday?
Well, they pay the ransom and you get it back.
Well, I mean, let's assume that, that the ransom is not negotiable, or, or that it just takes forever to.
Well, that's why they get away with it, because you're screwed basically and you're going to have to do it over again.
Right, right, I understand, but.
And the other question.
It should be daily backup anyway on the system.
Yeah, I'll check with Anthony on that. The other question would be if, for example, the staff has to work weekend or whatever to pull this back up, is that covered with the insurance? All right, I'll ask more questions, but it's, it was a start.
Nice work, Fran, and do you think?
Yes, thank you, we're getting new chairs. We are getting new.
Okay, so we're tabling that for more information. Next, we have the chamber here, I believe, tonight to discuss our host's trolley and Cold Spring Glow, which we always have, whenever you're here, Rebecca, it's Cold Spring Glow.
My wife.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for having us. I'm Rebecca Ramirez-Hassel.
Anne McBride-Aleone.
And we're the co-chairs of the Trolley Committee for the Chamber of Commerce, so we just want to say thank you for letting us be on the agenda this evening. We wanted to share with you in advance the draft of what we are going to be proposing to the county and Magazzino on October eighteenth. So you are all invited to that, and we'll give you the information if you don't have it, but already. But so tonight, the purpose of tonight is to share with you some of our recommendations. So to begin, just to let you know a little bit about it, if you don't already know, the Cold Spring Chamber of Commerce Volunteer Trolley Committee formed in two thousand and eighteen when members expressed enthusiasm for public. when members expressed enthusiasm for public transportation and the Cold Spring Trolley at a chamber breakfast. There was a lot of merchant buy-in and people were very excited, so we sort of harnessed the energy and asked the bidding and if we could work alongside him to help him make the trolley even more vibrant than what it was or what it is. So during the past year, um, changer, chamber members and volunteers have spent time meeting with village leadership and county officials, speaking, speaking to community residents and visitors, taking rides on the trolley, observing the trolley while in operation in Cold Spring, Beacon and Garrison, surveying the community of Cold Spring, Garrison and Beacon for feedback, researching the qualities that make a public transit system a success, and we've also had a very committed member who has volunteered a lot of time to help support marketing communications on a volunteer basis. And that has got a lot of community engagement. So, you know, that last part, researching the qualities that make a public transit system a success, is very important to what we drafted today.
Yes, so we sort of founded the, what we feel are the guiding principles of successful public transportation, and they are reliability, recognition, affordability, accessibility, predictability and convenience. So we worked with this sort of base of goals and that's how we came to our recommendations for Putnam County.
We also took, uh, the guiding principles with some of the village feedback incorporation. Our proposal is for improvements for the twenty twenty trolley service, which begins in June of twenty twenty. So we've taken into account concerns raised by village elected officials whom we met with earlier this season, Mayor Morandi and Trustier Lee, uh, including the number of location of stops on Main Street corridor, the frequency of the trolley traffic on Main Street and the size and capacity of the vehicle, in addition to, um, you know, the surveys that we still have out there. So we have four goals, four committee immediate goals, and those are to improve service reliability, increase ridership and influence management of tourism traffic flow. And last, but certainly not least, connecting both residents and visitors easily with cultural and historic destinations, businesses, not just here in the Main Street, but in the Cold Spring area and other nearby towns. And so those goals, we hope, um, to, uh, reach through two separate.
Initiatives.
Initiatives. One is our proposed route and the other is the, um, street signage. So Anne will go into a little bit of.
Yes, absolutely, and I do just want to say that, um, whenever we discuss, whenever we have discussed the trolley with residents, there is obvious excitement about it and, and a desire to ride it, to be, to have it to be more, a bigger part of our community and to have it more accessible. So there's, there's a lot of engagement with this trolley, we're just simply trying to make the connection easier. So taking that into mind, the biggest and, you know, we, we really feel that one consistent route throughout the day would help minimize confusion. Also, we are, we are recommending a, a longer route, which will keep the trolley outside of Main Street Village, whereas we're only stopping a few times during the day, as opposed to coming in, going there, coming back, going there. So that it's consistent throughout the day, it's going to start at the train station, stop at the visitor center, up by Saint Mary's, and then go for the larger loop of Garrison, Magazino, Beacon. So it, it really is the consistency that we're after and, and the focus on the cultural institutions and other destinations that people want to reach. I think, I think that's about all I have so far, yeah, for the route.
So community support and local government buy-in is essential to us being able to succeed at convincing the county to work with us to increase ridership and, you know, all those goals. So in order to achieve our six guiding principles, we're seeking to support, the support of the community and the cooperation and collaboration of our local governing bodies. Feedback from riders indicates that there are problems catching the trolley and we propose that the village permit, uh, limited signage in the village area so that the public has the opportunity to identify where the trolley will make scheduled stops. We recommend two types of trolley stop, uh, stop signs to be installed. We would recommend them to be installed in places that are A, safe and convenient for riders, B, likely to be used by many riders, and C, located in places that are highly visible and where the driver can actually see the, the sign, because it's not always the same driver.
Yeah, and we, like, these are still in the development stage, but we are basically thinking either a freestanding, heavy-weighted sign that can be put out seasonally in certain areas such as Lund Terrace or a, a metal sign that can be affixed to already existing street furniture. So like at the Metro North Station. So, you know, this is all a work in progress, but we really feel that without the signage, people just don't know where to go, they don't, they don't know where the trolley is going to take, stop and, and it, it causes a confusion and, you know, congestion. So the first stop is the Cold Spring Metro North Station parking lot. That would be affixed to one of the sign, the current signage already there. From there, it would loop around to the visitor center, but it would actually be Lund Terrace right across from the visitor center. And then it would go up to Main Street and it would stop right by the memorial at Saint Mary's Lawn. And from there, it would carry on to Putnam History Museum slash Chestnut Ridge. There actually is what looks like a pre-existing stop already there with a bench and it would make for a really great stop for elderly people that would want to possibly visit some cultural institutions. Be much easier. And then as it loops back through after Magazino, we, it would stop at Butterfield Library in front of Butterfield Library, and I've reached out to the library and they fully support having a stop in front of the library.
This is after it's looped through Garrison?
Yeah, this is, this is well back, but we feel that, you know, that would get you close enough to get your way back down Main Street and into the village if that's what you're looking for, or to carry on to Beacon. But, you know, I think it really would reduce the, the flow of the trolley through the village, as we understand it is a large vehicle, but, um, it, it could, you know, that consistency is really what we need to make people know where they can find it and when they can find it.
So from Putnam History Museum, they're going south though?
Yeah, from Putnam History, they're actually going to, um, to, yeah, Bosco Bell, Garrison Train, Manitoba. So it's, it's more or less similar to its current route, but we're just trying to finagle it and, and not change it at every hour as it has been. This, this route would actually take closer to, I believe, two hours to accomplish, whereas right now the trolley's running on one hour loops.
And two separate loops, Garrison Loop and a Beacon Loop. So for long-term vision, um.
Can I just, um, what happens, okay, it stops at Butterfield and then it goes to?
Beacon.
Dia. Okay, then.
Well, the trails.
It, well, it stops along the way at the trail and then to Dia Beacon where it turns and comes back.
Okay, but not through Beacon's Main Street?
No, because there is a B-free loop, which does the Main Street, um, so we don't feel that redundancy is necessary.
Again, these are just recommendations, these are not things that the county has agreed to.
And the county ultimately decides the course.
Where does it currently stop on Main Street?
Could we, could you just write your question down, just so, we're, we're almost through? And then we can certainly take more questions. So, two more things, so long-term vision, so as our trolley transportation system achieves these guiding principles of successful, uh, public transportation, reliability, recognition, affordability, accessibility, convenience, predictability, it will gain ridership and community support. With growing emphasis on using green technology and sustainable practices, we envision transitioning out of the current vehicles and into smaller, more efficient hybrid vehicles without losing the trolley's vintage design. These actions would support Putnam County and the town to fill town's climate smart community initiative goals as well as help leverage funding to support marketing and communication. So the two upcoming meetings that are, are important, where we will continue shaping this recommendation are the Nelsonville Village Meeting tomorrow at seven PM and the Trolley Presentation at Magazino, uh, the Trolley Committee Presentation on Thursdays, the seventeenth of October at ten AM.
We are recommending a stop be added in Nelsonville after the trial, on, on the way to Magazino. There's currently not any stop in Nelsonville and, um, very near to Nelsonville Village Hall and their memorial park across the street, we feel could make for, uh, a good stop and it's walkable to the, their business district.
Okay, we can take questions?
Yes.
Can you, uh, I wasn't taking down everything as you were going along, but you had a stop at Lund Terrace, which is where I believe we now have signs that say no stopping, no standing, no parking.
Yeah.
And that was put there for a reason, because people, that's the only place people can make a U-turn. So pulling a trolley there to stop could be a problem. But that's the only place people can actually, you know, and we've ticketed cars for the past couple of months for.
It's not even there though. It's gonna be parking on Lund Terrace.
It's, it's actually stopping at that stop sign and letting people get on and off.
So you're gonna back up traffic up the hill?
Yes, for about a half a minute.
I would think we would all not want that.
And then the other, and then the other one that I had that hit me right away as you were talking is in front of Butterfield Library.
Yeah, it would have to be, yeah, you'd need clearance in terms of where the trolley could safely pull in.
Yeah, because there's, you can't double park there with traffic and there's usually, depending on the time of day or the crowdedness of the village a lot of cars is, but that's not our call, that's, that's a town, town call, I believe, or, it's a town or camp, or county.
It's the state.
State road.
It's a state road.
It, it seems to me that the fog line in front of Butterfield Library would end up being underneath the trolley even if the trolley's tires were right up against the, the parking area is just not that wide. It's wider on that side, on the east side of ninety than it is on the west side of ninety. Just.
Which way, where were you talking with stuff?
In front of the law.
I mean, Butterfield has a parking lot in the back, if they can negotiate there and pull in and then pull back out, which may be an option.
Yeah, I mean, we are open to suggestions, we just feel that if we can increase ridership, maybe it means someone taking the train and, and keeping the car at home if, for the whole day.
If you're gonna make a two-hour loop, that's not the one, if I want to go, you know, from here to the museum or something and then I want to wait for the trolley, then two hours is a long, and we have one trolley, right?
We actually have two, but it's, the second one is used as a backup for, yeah, for. There's only one on the road. I mean, our, our, our thinking is that this is more of a, this is an excursion, this is like, I'm going to Bosco Bell for a few hours. If, if you're looking to go pick up some groceries, the trolley's not gonna work for you because we just don't have that luxury.
But a visit to Manitoba or a visit to Dia.
Yeah.
Or a visit to Magazino or Bosco Bell.
Yeah, like that window, that window fits in terms of the kinds of excursions to be had.
So have you gotten all your survey responses back yet, is, or is the survey still?
Uh, so we still have, we still have, um, surveys that are being picked up tomorrow, some from Beacon Library, some from Garrison Library. So we're almost finished entering everything.
Okay, and you guys are committed to positively supporting the trolley going to Beacon?
Yes.
I have a little bit of a, I have more than a little bit of a problem with that. As a Putnam County taxpayer, why am I paying for somebody to get a ride to a different county?
I believe it was, it's something to do with their budget or, I thought it was a Department of Transportation decision, like that's what I always understood it to be, we can clarify that. I, I thought it was like having something to do with the way they got paid to include Beacon or something was.
Maybe Beacon, touches county, maybe funding a portion of.
Maybe, but we can, we can get more.
We certainly can not represent, I mean, the entire merchant body that's here. You know, and I don't think the chamber would, would also, I, I can't say that for, for Eliza either. I personally, I would say, you know, yes, I do, because, um, I, I feel that people should have the opportunity to, we're, we're creating a, an opportunity for cross-pollination, which will allow for people to visit and explore and see for further opportunity within the Hudson River Valley. So it's not just about us. And I, I do see that, you know.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking that the trip to, the trip to Dia is making the route longer. So therefore, if it's a two-hour route and it includes going to Beacon and all the traffic that that involves, if you eliminated that, then you can make a route that's actually more responsive to the people that are actually here and it serves Putnam County, you know. A two-hour route just seems inconvenient to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did actually have an iteration of that because the B-free loop exists and it was like, why not just create connectivity here at Beacon Loop? So it definitely is one of the things that we were discussing.
It has been discussed, I think we finally had to come to a conclusion that we needed to take what we had and refine that first and then build from there, because otherwise we'll never accomplish anything, we just feel like, if we, if we simply take what is already sort of existing and just make that better, then we can really step back and say, all right, now this is really running, why are we doing it this way? Or can we, can we improve upon it, or can it, you know, so that conversation has definitely been had, for sure.
And we did reach out to Kelly, um, who's running for city council in Beacon, who was the founder or, you know, helped really make the B-free loop exist, and we were asking, you know, how, what would you think of this idea of the B, you know, just connecting the two and allowing for the B-free loop to just do the rest?
Well, if the Beacon Loop came to, you know, meet up like at Breakneck or something like that and, you know, so that they're taking people from, not to reinvent everything here, but, you know, if they're responsible for the people that need to travel to the end, you know, the edge of the cabin line and then redo the same thing, then, I don't know, that makes more sense to me. And it also doesn't necessarily take potential business away from Main Street.
Doesn't it also bring potential business to Main Street?
How many people do you see riding the, the trolley or coming from Beacon to Cold Spring?
Well, that's a different argument though, isn't it, because it's, it's not, that's not, if, if no one's riding the trolley now and they're trying to improve trolley ridership, then, um, that, that's what they're addressing, that no one's riding.
Or maybe there's a reason why it's doing it and it's not needed, it's also a, a reason.
We've actually seen.
The feedback has been that it, they, people want, want the service and it, it does exist and they.
You won't see this right now because we don't have it, but at the Magazino presentation, you will see that in the last year, um, that it has increased ridership and even though we're just a small group of volunteers, we actually do think we have impact. Because I did see the trolley, you know, when we were meeting, I would see it empty and now I'm starting to see at least a couple of people in there. And if, if these small little pieces put together will help make it a bigger impact and will help make it useful and effective and, um, create opportunity.
I mean, to be quite honest, this, like, for me, this all started at that meeting, because I've lived here since twenty eleven and I never even understood what the trolley was, except possibly a fancy wedding mobile. I mean, I would look at it sort of riding around and had no idea what it was doing. So when I'm hearing that it's actually this transportation that's available to people and I've got three young kids that I would have, I would love to bring on a trolley ride, I go to other places and take trolleys, like, you know, Rhode Island and whatnot, like, it just, it just made me feel like, why do we have this thing that's not being utilized and it's just sort of, you know, drumming around town but not really picking up people and not letting people engage with it? So that's really what we wanted to do and, you know, I think, I, I think a few small tweaks can put it well on its way.
Just to put this in your ear, one of the things that bothered me about the trolley is how early it ended. They pick up people that come up to go see plays at Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. When the play's over, how do they get back?
Yeah.
You know, I think that's a need that's, that the trolley doesn't address. I mean, I saw plenty of people getting on the trolley to go see a play at Bosco Bell, but, you know.
Did you take the survey?
I did take this one.
Where do you currently access the trolleys, on Main Street, Cold Spring anyway?
Visitor Center, Bandstand, Train Station. And they actually have Village Hall on the schedule, but I don't believe it ever stops there.
It stops there.
It does stop there, okay.
I picked it up there.
Oh, okay.
That's good, because I sent the tourists there.
Oh, good.
Saturday.
Is this gonna be seasonal?
It is seasonal, yeah.
So it'll just be basically summer, fall?
It runs to November. And that, we're just, we're just adopting what already exists and tweaking, not asking for more, at least not yet.
It should be sort of a set schedule, or an almost set schedule, then?
That's what we're asking for.
The schedules right now are posted down at the Visitor Center.
Right.
And as they say, there are two routes. Now, you mentioned stopping at the village offices just a moment ago, but the village office wasn't on the list of stops.
That's one we would, we recommend to take off. We're recommending that one come off to free up that Main Street.
Great, top and bottom of Main Street. Thank you.
Great, so if you have any more questions, feel free to reach out.
I do, I have a couple comments. I, I just think that, looking at the trolley, first of all, when we met, we met with the head of transportation, who you would think would like be, you know, more involved in this, and actually is getting paid to, to do routes and routes, I should say, and that doesn't even happen. It seemed like he was not, you know, when I brought up having a more economical vehicle, and having something that, you know, would be able to park easier, and wouldn't cause such, you know, you know, a pileup or whatever, or a backup because of its size, and it limits where it can park. He seemed resistant to that, and basically said, well, then you don't want it. And I go, no, that's not what I'm bringing up, that, you know, if, if we're gonna do this, then I think you need a smaller vehicle. So, yeah, right now, the way it is, first of all, a trolley seems like a theme park thing to me, and I don't feel like as a resident of Cold Spring, and this is my personal opinion, that I want a theme park. It's not a theme park to me, this, this is my home, I, I don't need a raceroni car coming up Main Street. But that aside, I just feel like, first of all, we're, we're, as far as the environment and everything that we keep talking about, this is, throws everything into the face of that. It's like, I, I don't know what the cost is on fuel, we're, we won't park it in the village, we have to keep going back and forth, which is taking, I don't know how much, you know, gas that's using, so there's a lot there. The people that are, this is for our area, but again, the people that are, you know, the drivers aren't, it's not employing anyone with the, from the village or the town that I know of, I think that's a problem. So I think one main problem is going back and forth with an inefficient vehicle. I think the ridership is eighteen people, how many people does it hold? So we have twenty people that are taking, that may, that, right now, there's ridership, even if it's, you're going up a hundred percent, we have to see what that actually was. So at, the average amount of people that are on that, taking a two-hour loop on a taxpayer's dollar, just seems, you know, not a good, a good return. You know, it's, it's, it's a lot of money that we're spending for something, and we have twenty people. It's not gonna end congestion, it's not gonna bring, you know, the streets will still be packed. Some people, it'll be nice to have, you know, people that wanna go to Manitoba, that's great, but it's taking, you know, a half an hour to go back and forth or whatever, the time you're unloading and loading people on. And that's also the problem about parking at Long Terrace. If you pull up and stop at Long Terrace on a weekend, and people are trying to get on there, they're, they're, you know, that's, that's time, timely thing, you know, and if there are people that need attention, or older folks that, you know, might not be jealous of jumping on, then the vehicle's sitting in, you know, in our main streets for a length of time, that I don't think, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not good with that at all. You know, if they're parking down at the train station, if they could park down by the Visitor Center where it says no parking, but next to that, at least, that's out of the way, you know, if they get back up there. But that's, you know, there was problems with that in our meeting, we said it's hard for that vehicle to maneuver and back up there. You know, and to park out on Main Street in the middle, like on a Sunday, especially Saturday or Sundays, it's crazy, you know. And I'd agree with, with Lynn, I'm going to Beacon, if we wanna cross-pollinate, we have a train that you can jump on and come right to the foot of Main Street and walk up, and vice versa. So, you know, I think we was brought up in one meeting that people saw, someone saw people getting on the trolley at the train station. So, you know, I don't know where they're going, if they're coming back this way, you know, you're, you're there already. So, you know, those, those are my concerns about it, you know. I, I applaud the OLE effort, and, and I just think that, really, the vehicles should be something that's, that's economical, that really has a little more, even if it's at full ridership, you're gonna have twenty people that would get on in Cold Spring maybe, or maybe not, and do this whole loop, I, I mean, that's gonna take two hours.
I am completely hearing everything you have to say, and there's no way that I or you are gonna be able to convince you of anything other than what you, opinion you have already established. And, and I'm not saying that the theme park is, you know, I, I was just going through a couple of what you were saying, and when you see the data that's coming through, I guess, just, I'm just saying, like, take a look at what the data is saying and what the residents are saying, because these are our residents that are responding.
But with data, you have to also filter out who's answering, where they lived, how long they've lived, and, and, you know, so hopefully all that's in the data, you can't just say that a number of people from the village think this is great. Well, what people, and, and for what reason?
I rode, I rode the trolley with my daughter, she loves it.
I was speaking, if I could, just for a moment. So, I, you know, I would like to know, you know, I, I think that data like that can be, you know, can be manipulated in a way. I'm not saying you are or not, I'm just saying, it would be interesting to see how many people on all the streets, or how many people that have actually, I'll be interested to see your, your survey, and how you define it.
I think you, you're seeing that we are trying to work together to help shape something that exists that perhaps not everyone is happy with, but that it does exist. And the way that, I'm not sure if the chamber would say this, but I personally feel that we can have, we can work together, and even though the county might have not shaped it with you as leadership, right now is the opportunity to do that. And I think what you are saying is very important. And even if it seems as if someone is dismissive of perhaps what you have been saying, you are a leader, and you can help, you know, make the county leaders responding to the demands and the needs of residents.
I'd like to believe that, but over, over my tenure, the amount of times that we've gone through the county and have been dismissed, doesn't lead me to believe they'll listen to anything I have to say. And our meeting with Vinnie was, was-
But, I mean, that long-term goal that you're talking about is completely in line with our long-term goal. We wanna fix the, fix what is currently available to us, increase ridership, make it work, and then have that conversation about how do we make this more efficient, what kind of vehicles can we be sourcing next? This is what we've got now, and this is what we're gonna make work for now, but it's certainly not where it stops. And that is completely our vision, I mean, that's, it's just, we, we have to have the conversation working before we can go there, to be honest.
Sometimes, things that happen too quickly are very difficult to accept. But if they happen over time, they're easier for people. So if this resistance of what you're talking about has been along, you know, I just feel like-
Well, my resistance, I guess, I guess-
There, there are a lot of things you're saying here, and there's a chance for some of this to be communicated. And maybe it's a time where someone is listening. Maybe we, our committee has a little bit of, yeah.
Yeah.
So when do you meet with the Putnam County?
October eighteenth.
October eighteenth at ten AM, sorry, seventeen, Thursday.
At Magazino, is what you're saying?
Will that, will that presentation be available to send to us after the meeting?
Yes.
So if you could possibly do that.
Yeah, so we'll give, we'll ask Eliza to-
Yep.
Whatever the presentation is, I'd like to get it, because I might be able to make that meeting.
Okay.
It has data in it?
Yes, we will be sharing the results of this, right?
I mean, and I understand, and Judy made a comment that she rode the, the trolley with her daughter, and she loved it, and that's fine. And I'm sure if my grandchildren came, I would ride it once and love it. But I'm not, it's not gonna be something that's gonna make it worth keeping forever, if you enjoy it once or twice, or, you know, maybe every once in a while, you know, and that would be just an offhand thing. I would like to see something that is more, more sort of a commuting, you know, something that if I decide I wanna go to the museum one day, it's there for me, if I decide I wanna go, you know, to Bosco Bell or something, it's there for me, you know, on a regular, but more, more like a transportation thing than a, you know, a, you know, trolley type thing, you know, if, for, as a resident. Now, as a tourist, it's a whole different story, you know, and I think it was geared when it came in here as a tourist attraction, or something to help the tourists get around. If, if you're aiming it towards the residents, I think you need to sort of put a different handle on it. Because, you know, how much the residents will actually, you know, I took, I took the survey too, and said, yes, it's a nice thing, but, you know, how often am I gonna use it? In reality, yeah, it's a nice thing, but how often am I gonna use it? You know, probably not much if at all. And that's, I think, where the, where the, you know, the crosses. It's not because I don't like it, it's just because it's just not convenient for me.
Or also, you know, for residents, it needs to be functional, you know, it needs to address residents' needs, if it's gonna be functional in that.
And as, I think you said, when you were saying, you had no clue that it was what it was, or that it was even available for residents, and it was a touristy thing, or a wedding thing, or something like that.
No, no communication.
And the residents have not heard, have not been, you know, marketed to at all.
No.
And that's a piece that you can probably pick up there as well.
Well, thank you for taking the time to assist us.
Thank you for doing it, I appreciate you very much.
Yeah, I just say, help us, help us persuade, you know?
We're there.
And like, those longer term goals of like environmental hybrid vehicles.
We're there.
Let's push.
Yeah, absolutely.
Were you guys also doing the glow?
I, 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 yeah. I believe I'm just submitting the date, requesting that the date be approved.
I think so.
That's correct, December fourteenth, from five to nine, with a rain date of December fifteenth, from five to nine.
That's what happened last year.
Yeah.
And you have all the, you're gonna have to take care of getting the bags and the sand and the setup and all the helpers and-
Yeah, there's a whole subcommittee that's, that's handling the Cold Spring Glow, which I'm, like, I know Eliza knows that they're on it. They're trying to incorporate some local religious institutions to help coordinate-
Churches and a couple of other-
Yeah, like, some, some, some people are gonna adopt a block, basically, and handle the candles for that block.
If I might make a suggestion, everybody loved it last year, this was originally my idea. Because I've seen it elsewhere, and it's always wonderful, everybody loves it, it's a terrific thing. Maybe, maybe just in your advertisement about it,
Yeah.
encourage, encourage residents to put it along their streets too, along their driveways, or their sidewalks, or, you know, walkways too.
Sure.
If we can get-
What was the rain date again?
December fifteenth.
And the time, the hours?
It's five to nine.
In considering that date, though, I just wanted to put a, another bug in your ear, to remember that throughout the month of December, that weekend is usually when everybody either hosts or goes to a Christmas party. That's when most Christmas parties throughout the holiday season are done, so.
Which may be a good thing.
It might be a good thing, might also be difficult to get people to participate.
I know, December is so hard. It just, we just, we, we looked at the calendar, and that seemed like us.
I'm very glad you're doing that.
Yeah, we're very excited.
I will make a motion to approve the Cold Spring Glow.
Yay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Before you go, could you write down your names for me?
Uh, let's see, the old business, we, Marie would like to put this on hold until we get a new map. I did meet with the-
Thank you.
With the person running it, and went over everything, but we'll get a map, so we'll take that. Next request for permission to put a plaque on a bench at Foundry Cafe. I'd like to request approval of putting a plaque for a friend, a prominent figure in town, Patrick Lennon Pops, who recently passed away, on, on the bench across from Foundry Cafe. I think the only thing is, is there a size one that we have somewhere?
I think I have one of them.
What's that? I know, that's the way it sounds.
Yeah.
Not well worth it.
I think, I think those are both the highway handles, and there's a, there's a fee.
It sits on one slack, basically.
Yes, in certain slots. I think they ordered them, and I have to get what the fee is.
So, I mean, there's a question all been given.
I think there's a, there's a fee for it that we've been charging.
Two hundred and fifty dollars or something, I don't know exactly, but that's sort of off the top of my head, it sounds about right.
I'll check with Jeff tomorrow.
Yeah, and I think they ordered for the bogs, yeah, I think at one point, Bruce used to do them, but I assume it's like highway now, but I'm not sure.
So maybe, I'll make a motion to approve the plaque on, on the bench for Foundry Cafe, on the condition that the owner agrees to the fee.
The requister.
What's that?
The person who's requested.
The requister, yeah, what did I say?
And the owner.
Oh, the owner, sorry, yeah, the requister pays the fees.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, request from Clearwater to dock ten sixteen, and was that sixteen to eighteen?
Yes.
That's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Can I, go ahead, you wanna make the motion?
No, go ahead.
It sort of strikes, strikes me every year as we do this, and I, I add it up, we got about twenty-one days of the Clearwater comes in to Cold Spring from July until October. And I know we don't charge them, because it's a not-for-profit and it is educational. Do Helbain students get any benefit from this, do they ever offer this as a, as a something for Helbain, or can we push their buttons a little bit to get them to do something for the village who does this for them every year? I don't know exactly what it would be, we'd have to talk to the school first, but I think, I think that they should do something. They get the ability to come in every year, and this is twenty-one days of sort of blocking up our dock. And they bring students, you know, from all around, I guess, up and down the valley, or up and down the river. I'm just wondering what we can get as a little payback for this, for what we're giving them. So I, I will reach out to Helbain if you want, or, or-
Or to, um-
Clearwater.
Clearwater.
Yeah, Clearwater, okay.
They may be doing something that we're unaware of.
Want to be at contact and make your point?
Sure.
Okay.
I will do that.
So for now, I will make a motion to approve the request from Clearwater for docking ten sixteen to ten eighteen.
Without any contingency?
Without any, yeah, this could be for next year, but-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I couldn't tell who seconded.
Mary.
Thank you.
Uh, next approval bills.
Oh, I move to approve batch number fifty-three oh three, for a total amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and two cents.
I will second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, approval of minutes, um, nine, ten, nineteen. What's that?
There are a couple of typos that I had, I had remarked about, they're not directed.
On, on nine, ten?
On the nine, ten, so.
Okay.
Puling this spell, P-U-L-I-N-J.
What's that?
Holding is the first one. Um, oh, if you wanna make a motion with amendments.
Sure, I'll make a motion, well, you can make the motion.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the minutes from the nine, ten meeting, as amended, and those amendments will be given to Jeff tomorrow.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And second is nine seventeen, two thousand and nineteen. And second is nine seventeen, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, there are more, there are changes for that as well. So, for example, the time.
I do have tables, I haven't really had a good chance to look at it unless you.
Okay, we'll table, we'll table that one. Make a direction, get him to Michael. We'll prove it at our next meeting.
Okay.
You got something on the pan or not?
Just an announcement that the Castle River Run is October nineteenth, that the Red Center will be looking for volunteers. It's a Saturday and it's a wonderful event. So we urge everyone to come out either and run or volunteer. I don't have any more announcements, but if you have any questions for me or, yes.
Where is the medicine drop-off box? Where has that been moved to?
It's going to be moved, we're seeking a location. We're discussing it with several possible alternative sites. It's a town hall is being run. But that's an important question because a lot of people do use it. So we will let you know. We will get that information to you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The comment. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.